It's a little bit after seven o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. For Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five, for the city council meeting. Please stand for your feet, uh, for prayer and pledge of allegiance. Almighty God, as we gather today to serve our community, we humbly ask for your wisdom and guidance in our discussions. And we listen to each other with open hearts and minds, seeking to understand, uh, and have common ground, ground that is best for all of our citizens. Grant us the courage to make decisions that respect the needs of all those in Fairfield, and may our actions be guided by justice and compassion. We ask this in your name, dear Lord, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Brill?
Here.
Councilmember Bessel?
Here.
Councilmember Paulus?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Any agenda modifications for tonight? Seeing none, we'll let the agenda stand as written. Do we have a request for executive session this evening?
Yes, we do, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, negotiations with political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance, and preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timmer. We will need a motion and a second for executive session, please.
I made the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brill?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessel?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
We have a confirmed roll call, motions carried. Special presentations this evening. I believe we do have one. If you will, please state your name and your address, and if you can address council.
Hi, my name is Haley Craft. And if you do not see the redemptions, I am Adam Craft's daughter. And my school had Catholic School Week a few weeks ago, and we made letters to the governor and to you all. So if you do not mind, I would like to pass them out to you guys today.
That's great. Just so everybody knows, Haley's a sixth grader over here at Sacred Heart in Fairfield.
Thankfully, she looks like her mother.
Well said, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Why don't you give it to... So you can give it to Ms. Brill if you'd like. Thank you, Haley. We'll move to citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments this evening? Yes, sir. If you'd please come up, step up to the podium. You have about five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Vernon Click, 5953 Kingsmont Drive in Fairfield. I'd like to discuss the electric aggregation program. Uh, some time back, I saw info about the aggregation program. I believe it was in the flyer. We have a fixed rate for Fairfield residents, and that there will be an opt-out letter sent to the residents if I wanted to not participate in the aggregation. If I want to participate in the aggregation, I need to do nothing. But it was only there if I wished to opt out. I watched for the letter, and I didn't get one, which was okay, since I wasn't planning on using it anyway. So I went these, I think, about ten months, thinking I was in the program. When I received some very high bills in December and January, I began to wonder what was wrong. So last Tuesday, I started looking into it. I visited the city hall. The ladies up front gave me some info and a phone number to call. And when I talked to those folks, now I find out I was not included in the aggregation, because the data obtained from Duke had my account flagged as a third-party number, or a third-party supplier. I was unaware that I had that. I was told by Ohio law that third-party accounts cannot be included, and therefore I was not eligible. I'm a victim in the hole of this product, of a hole in this process. Those who are eligible are notified, and those who are not are not told, nor are they notified. I think what needs to be happened is continue sending those letters to those who are eligible, and also send letters to those who are flagged as ineligible, and what to do if they wish to participate. So I went back to my bills for the past ten months that I missed out on where I thought I was included. If I wasn't included, I would have paid a total of seven hundred eighty-four dollars for just the electric portion. I wound up paying one thousand nine hundred twenty-three. Need to do something about this hole in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Director Sackenheim, if you wouldn't mind stepping on the hall with this gentleman, giving him some information. Uh, we actually had a meeting just before the meeting tonight, sir, talking about energy aggregation, so this is timely. It'll give us a good chance to, to make some good, uh, informed decisions for the public and make some recommendations to the city manager, but, um, Assistant Manager Sackenheim will be able to very, very thoughtfully give you some information. Any other citizen comments this evening? Great, we'll move to council reports. Councilmember Brill?
Yes, thank you. I just want to remind council that on Saturday, February twenty-second, starting at nine o'clock, we'll be meeting for interviewing for the boards and commissions within the city, so I want to encourage you all to be there on time. There'll be donuts and, um, coffee, so, um, we need to take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have anything. Okay.
Oh, thank you, Vice Mayor. I do have, um, for Public Works, the City of Hamilton gave us an update today that, uh, they are revised schedule and are anticipating, uh, that the Billstein Bridge will be open March thirty-first. Work is weather and temperature dependent, so the date is not guaranteed, but they will open it as soon as the work is all done. Did you need to add anything to that, Ben? Can you say what the street is?
So it's Bill- Billstein, Holden Boulevard by the high school. That bridge has been closed for quite some time. And, uh, everyone's eagerly anticipating it reopening, and, uh, Hamilton gave us an update on it. They've been delayed due to the very cold weather this winter.
Good to hear that news. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
I just have a quick note for the golfers. The bunker renovations have started at the golf course. Top Shape Enterprises has started on the renovation of eleven total bunkers at South Trace. This rebuilding process will help to improve and complement the existing contours of the property while enhancing aesthetics and maintenance practices. Weather-dependent, this project should be completed by mid-April. Golfers will still be able to play while construction is going on. Thank you.
Great, thank you, ma'am. We'll move to public hearing. We will now open the joint public hearing. Madam Clerk, roll call for Planning Commission, please.
Commissioner Medler? Commissioner O'Brien? Commissioner Hassler? Commissioner Lepsky? Commissioner Davidson?
Here.
Commissioner Myers? Commissioner Robertson?
Great, so we're gonna welcome, uh, Mr. Greg Kathman to the mic for the joint public hearing for the Forest Fair Mall rezoning. Madam Clerk, will you please read the meeting notice?
All property owners and citizens of Fairfield, Ohio are hereby notified that a joint public hearing between the Planning Commission and City Council has been scheduled for Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven o'clock PM at the Fairfield Municipal Building, fifty-three fifty Pleasant Avenue, Fairfield, Ohio four five zero one four. The purpose of the hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding a change in zoning from C-two, Central Business District, to M-one, Industrial Park District, for four point one-two acres of land located four hundred feet south of the Terminus of Colb Drive at the site of the former Forest Fair Mall. Questions may be directed to the department by telephone at five one three eight six seven five three four five, or via email at development@fairfield-city.org. The department is open Monday through Friday between the hours of eight o'clock AM and five o'clock PM.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Mayor, members of council, and the general public, um, we're here to talk about an exciting project, one that's been, uh, eagerly awaited for a long time, and this is, uh, one of the first steps in a, in a long-awaited project here, the redevelopment of Forest Fair Mall. Uh, we sent out a staff report to all of you and all of the Planning Commission members last week. Hope you, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that. It's also available on the council agenda, so if any members of the public would like to read the, uh, the staff report, it's available on, on the, uh, the public website as well. Um, as the clerk said, this is a public hearing for just over four acres of land, uh, in Fairfield. It's a, this application is kind of the partner, uh, application along with the rezoning, um, process that they're following in Forest Park for about fifty acres in Forest Park, so they're kind of running simultaneously both rezoning processes in both, uh, both communities. Um, Aaron Lynn, our planning manager, and myself are going to, uh, tag-team the presentation tonight. I'll start, and Aaron will get into more of the technical details. Uh, when we're finished, we'll have representatives from Hillwood, the developer here, uh, to come up and, uh, give some, uh, information and, and presentation. And then we'll be open for any questions, and then, uh, from yourselves or from Planning Commission, and then, um, of course, it's a public hearing, so then you should open up to the public for any comments from them as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started here. So, uh, people of a certain age, like me, will, uh, remember Forest Fair Mall in its heyday, or remember it well, probably had some good times there. Um, so we, we went back in the Wayback Machine, found some old pictures, um, of when it was doing well. And the picture in the middle there, actually, it's hard to make out, but in the, in the Showcase Cinemas, the first movie listed there is Santa Claus Two. And I looked up when that came out, and that was November of two thousand two, so that picture is twenty-two something years old, so. Uh, so back then, the mall was doing pretty well, and it was known for a long time as Forest Fair Mall, Forest Park Fairfield, Forest Fair Mall. And then, uh, at one point, the, um, Mills Corporation purchased the property, and it turned into the Cincinnati Mills for a while. Then the mills pulled out, and it became Cincinnati Mall for a while, and then, uh, kind of a last-grasp effort to redevelop it. It's, it was called Forest Fair Village for a brief period of time. But that's, um, you know, so a lot of us just remember fondly how the, how the mall used to be. It's not like that anymore. Um, here are some pictures that Aaron took from just last week of, you know, debris, graffiti, litter, overgrowth, boarded-up buildings, boarded-up broken windows, that sort of thing. These are just a few pictures of what the outside looks like today. You can imagine what the inside looks like. It's not good. It's, it's not good for either community. It's not, uh, good for the businesses in that area. It's not a good situation, but fortunately, we have an opportunity here to reverse the decline. Um, we have a developer. We've been working with the developer, Hillwood, for more than three years on this project, and this was an early draft proposal of a redevelopment plan that Hillwood came in with back in two thousand twenty-one, so more than three years ago. And you can see that their proposal, they are an industrial developer, and that's what they do. And they came in with a proposal for three large buildings, um, that would take up nearly the entire site. So you can see on the, on the west side of the industrial buildings, they, they butt up right up to the restaurant outlots that are there. Um, these would be more large industrial distribution-type buildings. They would be cross-docked, mean, so it would mean probably a heavy traffic, uh, truck traffic count. And, um, you know, it was, it was an attempt to come up with an idea, but that, this idea was not favorably received in either community, Fairfield or Forest Park. And to their credit, um, Hillwood listened to the feedback and revised their proposal and came up with a different plan, this plan here, so. This is their current proposal. It's a business park called Park Two Seventy-five. Um, it includes three smaller buildings. They're still quite large, but they're, but they're smaller than their initial plan. It's in the, kind of the rear portion of the site, so obviously tucked up against the interstate and, uh, you know, back off of, um, South Gilmore Road, um, in a, in a difficult part of the, uh, property to develop. Um, it includes rear-loaded Class A buildings with some heavy landscaping, and we'll talk about some of the technical details in a little bit. Aaron will get into more, some more of the specifics. The site in total that they're looking to rezone is about fifty-four to fifty-five acres, only about four, just over four acres are in Fairfield, so just this little area here. The rest of the site is in Forest Park, so just to orient you, this is the line here that separates the two cities and the two counties. Actually, this dash line here is a school district line, so this is the Wenton Woods School District back here. That's the northwest school district, and that is the Fairfield City School District, so. It's a complicated project, uh, site with two cities, two counties, three school districts. Um, it's challenging. So Hillwood is proposing to develop the, you know, fifty-five or so acres here. So a logical question is, what happens to the rest of the site? Obviously, you know, two-thirds of the mall is still out, gonna be on property that they're not developing, plus all this parking lot. Well, that acreage would remain, so they're gonna demolish the existing mall, they'll leave, and the existing parking garage. They'll leave, you know, some of this pavement up here for now, but the idea is there would be thirty-five to forty acres around the front of the site for some sort of a mixed-use development. The property would remain in the ownership of the current owner, um, and Forest Park, Fairfield, the current owner, and any future developers would all work together on what that development in the front of the site looks like. So, uh, one, so this is a, just a moving project here, so Hillwood put in its application in late December. After they had submitted their application, uh, we all saw the announcement that Kohl's would be closing this store in April, so the Kohl's store is up here right now. The initial project, um, included demolishing around the Kohl's store and keeping that Kohl's store. It's to be determined, and I guess the guys from Hillwood can maybe address it when they talk about what happens to that structure now that Hillwood will be, uh, or that, now that Kohl's will be vacating it in April. So a lot going on, uh, with the project here, and like I said, Aaron will get into some of, some of the more specifics here in a minute. But did want to talk about some of the site issues and challenges with this site. We talked about them a little bit already, but uh, the site exists in a lot of different political jurisdictions, so trying to align the interests of all the communities and, uh, taxing, uh, entities here is, is difficult. It's a big building, one point five million square foot building. That's a large structure that's very expensive to, to deal with. And it's a, it's obviously a blighted, uh, property, the, that, we've seen some of the exterior photographs, but the interior is, is bad as well. The Fairfield Fire Department actually, um, ordered the parking garage to be vacated because of a, um, unfunctioning fire suppression system a number of years ago. Uh, Forest Park Fire Department, it's my understanding, has, um, ordered the entirety of the interior of the mall vacated because of some fire suppression, uh, challenges there as well, so. When you don't have sufficient fire suppression, it's just a safety hazard, so beyond just the blight and the negative economic impacts, there's a lot of health and safety concerns about the property as well. There's currently over ten million dollars of outstanding debt, so back when the Mills Corporation, uh, redeveloped the property in the early two thousand, they took on some, some debt through the Cincinnati Port Authority. There's still about over ten million dollars of that debt remaining, um, that needs to be addressed. There is, uh, in that, in those TIP agreements, when the Mills Corporation came around, there, there's some, uh, payments that were, are due to the Fairfield City School District. There's a little bit of outstanding, uh, payments still owed on that, that, that needs to be addressed. There is a state grant to assist with the demolition of the project, about seven point nine million dollar state demolition grant. That grant has a deadline to use the funds of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, so the end of this year, which is not very far away for a demolition project of this scale and scope. If the project doesn't proceed, there, there, we could be in danger of losing that grant, which would be extremely detrimental to the possibility of redevelopment of, of this whole site. Uh, another challenge is an out-of-town, uh, ownership group, so the owner of the property is based in New York. Um, they're not here every day. We can get a hold of them, but it's, it's different when somebody's not here, and they're not seeing the, the, the mall in its current shape. And they don't have relationships with local developers and redevelopment teams and that sort of thing. It's just more difficult to deal with. Um, it's, it's better when you have local ownership group. So there's just some of the site issues and challenges. Some of the benefits of entertaining this rezoning, um, just want to go through those right now. We have a, a group with Hillwood who's a very reputable. They're a top-tier developer with a local presence. These guys are local. They've been in the commercial real estate market for several decades at least. I go back a long way with Jay. We've, we've known each other a long time professionally. So they have a local presence. They own, and they're gonna own a Class A business park, um, and which is, represents a hundred million dollar investment. Somebody wants to go into a dead mall and, and, put a hundred million dollar investment on it, that's a good thing. Like I mentioned earlier, the land at the front of the property, it'll be cleared of all these encumbrances for a future redevelopment, so the, the demolition grant will not be lost. We'll be able to utilize that grant. The, the whole mall and the parking garage will be taken down. Another big benefit of the Hillwood proposal is that they're gonna pay off the bonds, so that ten and a half million dollar debt that was due on the property will be wiped clean for this. Now the front part is a lot more attractive and a lot more development-ready with that debt gone. We're gonna settle up, uh, any outstanding issues with the Fairfield City School Districts and, and figure that out, um, so the schools will be supported. And we all know that there are some major important businesses in the South Gilmore corridor and, on both sides of the line, but primarily in Fairfield. And we want to protect and support those major businesses that we have, and having a dead mall right next to them is, is not good for them. It's not good for their economic health and their investments that they made in the corridor. We want to protect and support them. And approval of this project, we think, will advance other development efforts in the corridor. Obviously, people, you know, we talk to developers and, and businesses all the time, and they're, one of the first questions in that area is what's going on with the mall. They want to know what's happening. They want to know before they invest in a piece of property. They want to know that other properties are being taken care of, so that's a question that comes up all the time, so. Those are just some of the benefits of, um, the Hillwood project and pursuing this redevelopment, so. I've been doing a lot of talk, and I'm gonna hand it over to Aaron now to, uh, talk about some more parts of the project.
I'm gonna get into some of the site specifics, some of the, the little, the details. Um, this map that you see up here, um, it shows you the, um, overall, um, existing, um, conditions of, of the site. Um, again, that yellow line shows you the corporate boundary, um, north. It's obviously Fairfield, south is the Forest Park. Um, the site is also located in the South Gilmore, um, MAC, um, small area and overlay district. Um, the entire property, um, consists of about a hundred acres of that, um, about twenty-two percent is in Fairfield, and the remaining seventy-eight is in Forest Park. The property consists of, actually, you know, as we can see, obviously, the mall building, the parking structure, which is four stories. Um, it consists of all this parking out front and the parking out here. Um, there's a ring road that goes around the property, so it starts here on the south, across from, um, Omniplex, goes all the way around the site. This is not cooperating, but you know where the ring road goes. Then it connects to, wow, it connects to, um, the, the Terminus of Colb Drive, which is up here. Then it becomes a public road out to South Gilmore Road. It also has some internal access roads. There are actually, actually three detention basins. Um, I'll show this to you on another slide, because this pointer is acting a little goofy. What it does not include is, does not include those five outlet, outlots that are located up adjacent to South Gilmore that includes all of the restaurants. Um, as Greg mentioned, they're requesting to rezone, um, a total of both, um, pro- both cities, fifty-four acres. The big green area is the fifty acres in Forest Park, and then the four, um, and a little over four in Fairfield, and as you can see, that's pretty much where it's at now, is a portion of the parking garage and a portion of the interior of the mall. Uh, this slide shows you the existing zoning of the site. Um, the existing zoning in Forest Park is called PB. That is Planned Business. Um, they're proposing to rezone it to, um, IP, which is Industrial Park. Uh, and the Fairfield portion is Zoned C-two, which is, um, Central Business. Um, this classification is kind of between the C-one and the C-three, so the C-one is more of the neighborhood type uses, you know, not as intense. C-three is what you see on Route Four. It's the more intense. It's the, um, those uses that you, you get people from the region coming to. Um, and then the C-two, um, tends to really serve the residents of Fairfield, so it's not as restrictive as the C-one, but not as intense as the C-three. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning to M-one, and that is, um, our Industrial Park. It's very similar to Forest Park's IP, Industrial Park zoning. Um, it is a straight rezoning, so what that means, it's not a planned unit development. Um, typically with the planned unit development, it gives the city and council a little bit more control over what the site and the building looks like and, and some things like that. Um, I think it would be appropriate, um, to have the applicant, um, explain why they are going that route to the straight rezoning route. Um, some things about the M-one zoning, um, this really focuses on light industrial development, so you'll see things like light manufacturing, limited logistics, um, research and development, laboratory-type work, um, and then office restaurants and, um, some commercial uses where appropriate. Uh, there is, in your staff report, a full list of those uses that are permitted in the M-one. Um, what it doesn't permit are those heavy industrial uses, something like a Cook Foods. Um, you wouldn't see a contractor's yard or, um, a trucking terminal. Um, those are really more, um, reserved for the M-two zoning district, um, which is not what they're asking for at this site. Uh, this is that site plan that Greg showed you earlier. Again, there are three buildings that are being proposed. Um, they range in size from two hundred and fifty square feet to three fifty-five square feet, totaling over, um, nine hundred thousand square feet of floor space. Um, the floor space in each building is, tend to be flexible, so they can have one tenant all the way up to four tenants locating in there. Um, and this picture really shows, you know, that only a small portion of one building is located in Fairfield. The remaining area, um, of the land in Fairfield proposed to be rezoned would be reserved to employee parking, as well as, you know, some perimeter landscaping. We believe as staff that, um, this is a better layout than the one that you saw previously, the original one that they proposed, um, for a few reasons. Um, one, I'm not gonna touch on- One, I'm not going to touch on too much, is what, you know, Greg had mentioned about, it leaves the front half for, closer to South Gilmore for a potential mixed-use development. And it also would allow that potential mixed-use development to act as like a screen or a buffer of this building from South Gilmore, so you wouldn't really see it from South Gilmore Road once you have some other buildings or developments in front of it. We believe the smaller buildings would attract more favorable mix of office, light industrial, or I'm sorry, light manufacturing, and then some smaller logistic operations that would be better in favor than those cross docks, which, you know, have your docks on both sides of the building. And then a third good reason was that, by the way, you can see the buildings are laid out on-site. It shows basically the employee parking on the perimeter, and then it has the truck docks located on the interior within the inner part of the development. So the building themselves will act as a screening and buffering to those parts of the business that you really don't want to see. Site plan also shows some landscaping, both within the rezoning as well as outside of the rezoning areas on both of the ring roads. And then here is where you can see there's three detention basins. There's one off on Colb, one in front of the, what's that restaurant? Red Lobster, and then one just south of the Red Lobster, and they plan on cleaning those out and putting some landscaping around them as well. As mentioned, this site is located in the South Gilmore MAC overlay district, so they will have to comply with the code requirements for that, and that's typically like requiring a more detailed landscape plan, a lighting plan. And we typically see those at the time of site plan development. This is like a, I would call it a bird's eye view of the project. Again, I-75, 275 is on the right, you can see to the Coles, and then just to the left of the Coles would be the Colb Drive. That dotted line again shows you the separation between us and Forest Park, and it really shows you how much is actually in Forest Park. You can see here, again, if you look, there is employee parking along the exterior of the buildings. And you can really get a good glance looking at the inside where all the loading and unloading docks are. The truck parking is in the middle, and then all the, your garbage dumpsters and all of that would be located, again, in the middle. These buildings are designed so that the main entrances, or the main, not the corporate entrance where the business offices are, before you get into the warehouse portion, so the main entrances would be at the corners of the buildings, on all of the buildings. And then in the middle, they have two entrances that could either be for employees, if you have two tenants, or if you have four tenants, those would be the interior business tenants entrances. This is some building elevations of what the buildings are going to look like, they're all going to look pretty similar. The top just shows you a portion of what one of the buildings are going to look like. On the left, you can see that's that main entrance, that corner, that main entrance. It's distinct from the other areas because it has a lot more glass to kind of give it that corporate feel. And then on the right, you can see what that interior entrance would look like as well. The walls are kind of broken up with some recesses and some pilasters, as well as some multiple shades of color, just to kind of break up that large mass and give it some dimension. So one of the things that the comprehensive plan requires is that if you have a business that you anticipate that was going to generate more than 100 or more peak hour trips, we require you to do a traffic impact study. This is to ensure that any transportation improvements that are needed are included, you know, in our conditions of approval. The applicant did do a study, they had submitted it to both our city engineer as well as Forest Park. Our engineers have reviewed them, and they actually did send some minor comments back to the, to their engineer, and they're still, right now, just trying to work out some of the little issues that they have with that. Overall, they were happy with it, but there were a few little things that need to be changed. This study really looked at the traffic on South Gilmore from the interstate north to MAC. They looked at, the study analyzed two phases of the development in terms of trip generation and capacity analysis. Phase one is what this project is, it's looking at trips generated from the business park, assuming with an opening year around 2026. And then phase two looks at trips of a potential future mixed-use development. Not quite sure what that looks like, but that's some, and at what point in time in the future that will happen is unknown at this time. The study was commissioned before the Coles had announced that they were going to be departing in the spring, so this report does include Coles operating. But this minor discrepancy is really not expected to substantially impact the findings of the study. The study does state that all the truck traffic is going to enter and exit the site from, what they call, I think it's called Fairfield Village, Fairfield Mall or Fairfield Village Drive. So it's the ring road right across from Omniplex, so all the truck traffic that's expected for this development is expected to come in and out here. Now employee parking, that, or employees are expected to come in on either or. There is really no requirement that they're putting in place for which entrance that they can use. Let's see, currently, right now, we do not permit truck traffic on South Gilmore, north of Colb Drive. So one of the recommendations from Fairfield is to add street signage on Colb stating that no truck traffic is allowed. Because if you see here, well, on a previous one, they do have access to a road that could actually get you to Colb Drive. Again, that's supposed to be for the employees, if we have some signage put up there to notify the trucks that they can't go that route, that's something that we are requesting. Let me see, what else do I have? Oh, just a few more things. Overall, the study states that South Gilmore is currently designed to accommodate the traffic related or created from the business park. It does recommend some timing and lane lengthening improvements at the interchange when the mixed-use development is built out and by whoever develops that mixed-use. They would be on the hook for any of those improvements. I'm a planner, I'm not a traffic engineer, so if you have any detailed questions, I would defer them to Ben Mann, our Public Works Director, or their engineer who is here, and they can come up and speak in a few minutes, but I can give you the bird's eye view, but I can't give you the actual detailed stuff. We always have these last two slides, our process, you know, tonight's the public hearing. We have planning commission at 6 o'clock this Wednesday in this room. And then we have a second and third reading at our next two council meetings. What I did want to add is that, you know, as Greg mentioned, Forest Park is going through this exact same rezoning process as we are. Their process works a little differently than ours, they have planning commission first, so their planning commission met on January 14th, and they did recommend approval to their city council. They had their public hearing on January 27th, and we anticipate a vote to be on February 18th. So they are moving forward with this as well. Greg and I, or other staff, would be happy to answer any of your questions, or if you just want to jump into hearing from representatives from Hillwood and hold off on your answers, that's okay as well.
Hey, Aaron, question for you. From the looks of it, these look very similar to the properties that we have on 747 and Sims Road there. Those warehousing look, it looks almost identical to the, is that accurate? Where's Greg? You know the ones I'm talking about?
The ones at Union Center, Tim?
Yes.
They are similar, so this is a different developer.
Understand that.
But it's similar types of products, yes.
Okay, big box warehousing-looking buildings.
Business park uses, yes, so these, and developer will talk about this a little bit. They've added some more glass and some other features to break up some of the mass over some of, because we have some design guidelines and things in this area that we don't have in other areas, but yes.
And the other question I have, Aaron, is under mixed use, which would be the front of the property, that's what it would be zoned for, right? What does that include?
So right now, it's Zoned C2. Whoever develops that area, it depends on what they choose to go out in that location. You could do it under a C2 straight zoning because it allows a lot of commercial-type uses. If you wanted to add the mix to it of maybe having a hotel or maybe having some sort of higher-density residential, that's when you would have to rezone it to a PUD to accommodate those different types of mixed uses.
Good evening, members of council and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present the redevelopment of the Forest Fair Mall site. My name is Ben Davis, I'm a senior vice president with Hillwood here in Cincinnati. I also have Jay Smith, who's vice president of development, and then we have a couple other members of the project team, Kevin Elliott with Klein-Drus, he's the civil, and then Jake Elliott with ATA, who's our architect. So anyway, Greg and Aaron did a really thorough job, so I'll be brief here. But the Forest Fair Mall redevelopment represents a unique and exciting opportunity to transform a long neglected property into a new hub for business activity, job creation, and further redevelopment. Hillwood has been involved with the site since October of 2021, and the original concept was to redevelop the entire 90 acres into industrial business park. In response to community feedback and municipality feedback, we have reduced the business park to 55 acres, leaving 33 acres for commercial redevelopment. With Hillwood removing the hurdles to allow this to happen, the adjustment aligns with the city's priorities and positions the project to attract additional redevelopment and uses. Jay will go deeper on this, but we also have improved the building's aesthetics. You know, we got feedback around the look and feel of them, so we enhanced the glass entry features. And, you know, we tend to build on the higher end of quality, we think it attracts better tenants, and there's a perception of high quality, so we do think look, feel, and they're very important to our developments. And then also, I know one of the main points along the way here has been about the parking garage. And so, you know, part of the challenge is, is to demo any of the structures that the TIF funded, you have to therefore pay off the bonds, because that's what collateralizes the bonds. So as part of our project, we're going to demo the parking garage and free up those five acres for redevelopment as well. And in total, the total project's about $100 million. And three and a half years into it, I don't, I don't think we'd be standing here if we didn't really believe in the viability of this project. Super complicated, a lot of pieces to pull together. So yeah, so we're excited. Greg touched on most of these, but site is complicated, and we're, as part of this, we're going to pay off the $10.5 million in bonds. You know, the current owner has been delinquent, right? So there's a risk there that if that keeps up, this goes through a lengthy legal process. But you know, I think the theme around this is the excess site work, so even past the boundaries of what we're acquiring, we are bringing down those structures. We are doing site work, we are paying off the bonds, so those 33 acres are pretty much ready to go, free and clear of major encumbrances. So we think that'll be good for both communities as well. And then, you know, while the time is now, like I mentioned, the bonds haven't been paid. You know, there's, we feel it's time. Anything that comes out of that is probably not going to be a positive thing, just a lengthy legal proceeding. We have the $7.9 million demo grant through the state of Ohio that with the Butler County Land Bank to give them confidence that we are on the right path to use these funds, and they passed a motion for this to remain with the project, so that's a win. And then I think just the decline of the property, you know, there's, there's, there's no way for it to get better, right? Times have changed, and I think with all these pieces we have lined up, whether it's the demo grant or this site plan and how we've structured it with the seller, you know, we really feel the time is now, and we have a viable project and a viable path forward. So yeah, with that, I mean, we, you know, we're hoping for a positive approval here, and, you know, we think this will lock $100 million of private investment and pave the way for a lasting transformation of this important site to both communities. So thank you for your time and consideration, I'm going to kick it over to Jay. He's the head of development, and then we can open it up for questions and answers.
Good evening, my name is Jay Smith, I'm the vice president for, of development for Hillwood in Cincinnati here. What I'd like to do is run through the development plans that we have here in front of you. Aaron did a great job of going through the plans, so she's shown several of the features of the development, but I'd like to at least walk through our presentation here, and then we can certainly answer any questions that you may have for us as well. So the first slide here, this is the four acres that we are looking to rezone in Fairfield. I also, as part of the package, so this is, site is being rezoned in both Forest Park and Fairfield. Obviously, the piece here in Fairfield is the smaller one, it's the four acres. But then this section here, this is the 50 acres approximately that is being rezoned in Forest Park. As Aaron had indicated, we've been through the planning commission process and the public hearing with Forest Park. We have a five-to-one recommendation for approval from Forest Park. We have to go back for a second and third reading, so the dates are February 17th and March the 3rd. And so we're expecting or anticipating that we would get approval at that point in time. From a acquisition standpoint, so it's really these two pieces that you see here, we are also acquiring the access road on the south side, which is identified as Forest Fair Drive. And then that goes out to Gilmore Road, Winton Road, and then the detention ponds on the north and the south side, out in front of the Red Lobster, we are acquiring as well as part of our land acquisition, and the detention basin on the north side of Colb Drive. I think that's important to talk about, we understand that those basins have been left in some disrepair. So as part of our acquisition, we'll be acquiring those, and we'll have full maintenance responsibilities of those. So the plan is to go in and clean those up, put some additional landscape around them. There will be cross-access easements for the rest of the development, but we will be the lead entity as far as taking care of those basins themselves. And then as far as our site plan goes here, again, we have a three-building plan here. We've had numerous different plans that we've presented and discussed. This plan here, some of the features, the buildings have been designed to be outward-facing so that the public really sees the exterior of the buildings and the architecture for the buildings themselves. All of the truck courts and any of the dumpsters and, you know, the sort of what I'll call the functional part of the building have been directed toward the interior of the development. Buildings two and three, which are on the right-hand side of the plan that you see here, the truck courts actually face each other, and so those are completely screened from the exterior. Building number one is rotated, it's basically perpendicular to I-75. It is mostly screened by building number two and by building three. There are probably some views of that particular area that you would see from the exterior. But again, most of that has been screened, and that was, that's been part of the design process. As far as traffic distribution, so the way that the site is designed, there is an interior access road that connects from the intersection at Omniplex. It comes to the east through the site, it then sort of divides the development itself and then goes up and connects to Colb Drive to the north. As part of our traffic study, we've designated that 100% of the truck traffic will enter and exit from the southern access point. We understand that there is a restriction north of Colb Drive on truck traffic, traffic making a right-hand turn on Gilmore Road. We are certainly open to putting additional signage on Colb Drive that would further sign and limit that traffic, but our intentions are that everybody would be coming in and exiting both at that southern access point. I would say all the distribution from the site is headed back to I-275, and so there's really no reason for it to want to go north once it leaves the development. I do understand that some trucks have lost their way and find their way up there from time to time, but the intentions are that all of our traffic would be coming from the, from the south. So as far as construction on the site, and this has been touched upon, we would be demolishing the entire mall structure and the parking garage that's on the site. There's a couple pylon signs that are out along Interstate 275. Those two large pylon signs would also be coming down as part of the development. And then what And then what that does is that frees up the 33 acres approximately on the western portion of the site that that could be redeveloped, whether that uses the existing zoning or somebody comes in and rezones it to a PUD or some sort of mixed-use plan. That's still, you know, up in the air for future conversation. But at least from the standpoint that the mall and the parking garage and the bonds will all be taken care of, and then that'll allow for the opportunity for that land to be redeveloped. We do show some additional landscaping, new landscaping along the access drive to the south as well as the piece that connects back up to Cold Drive. We do have a fairly healthy landscaping program within Hillwood, and so we feel like we do have a Class A building product here as well as the site improvements with lighting and landscaping that go along with the site plan. The next plan here, this is really an aerial view, sort of looking from the west at the development just to get a general size and proximity of the buildings. You obviously have several developments of this nature and caliber within the city itself. And so I would think these buildings are similar to other buildings that you've seen in other locations within your community. This shot here is the front of building number one. And what we've done is we basically took the landscaping and reduced it down in size here. It's really just to allow you to kind of see what the front of the building would look like. This is obviously taken from a higher elevation. Nobody would really see the building from this perspective here, but it does give a good generalized view of the front of the building as well as buildings two and three that are kind of in the background. As Erin had indicated, there are main building tenant entries at either corner of the building. And then we have two intermediate entries. Whether this is a single-tenant building or a multi-tenant building, this gives us some flexibility in the size of the tenants that can go here. I would anticipate that we'll probably see two to maybe three tenants for each building. But the way that it's designed, we could probably accommodate up to four tenants. Sometimes those interior entries become more of a employee-type entrance, and then they have, we'll have office at the corners. But again, the buildings have been designed to be flexible from the standpoint that they can accommodate numerous different-sized tenants and requirements. This here is an updated rendering of the building corner. That would be a similar entrance feature that we would have at each corner of all three buildings. So there would be a total of six of these entries. We've added some additional glass and canopies at the request of really working through the design with Forest Park. But that was one of the requirements, was to improve the look of the corners and add some additional glass. And so they were very happy with this revised design that we have come back with here. This is a shot looking at building number one. If you're on the perimeter ring road, kind of between the building and I-275, looking to the east, it just shows the entry there. It gives you a, you know, kind of a shot of the building number one. And then you can see building number two in the background there. There will be clear-story windows around the perimeter of the building, so we do have some additional glass there. It's kind of hard to tell from here, but the panels do have offsets in them. So wherever we have man doors around the perimeter of the building, we do take the panels and step them in and out just to kind of try to break up the size and the scale. This is one of the smaller intermediate tenant entries here. So again, this could be a tenant entry. This could be a potential employee entrance. It could be an ancillary office area. The buildings are designed to have flexibility from that standpoint. Each building has essentially two of these intermediate entries as well as the entries that you saw at the corner. And then this shot here, this is really, as you're heading westbound on I-275, again, we've removed some of the trees that are along the interstate there and the trees that we proposed on our landscaping plan, just that you can get an idea of the size and the scale of the building. We've got the glass at the tenant entry there. You know, cars will be driving by at 65, 70 miles an hour, so you'll get a very quick snapshot of it. There's actually a wall as you're heading westbound. There's a sound wall, and so you really have to get almost on the development before you'll even see any of the buildings. There's a little bit of a wooded area that's right there at the initial corner that just shows up as green grass there, but there are some trees and a little wooded area. So you'll be well, you know, halfway into the building before you really get a good glimpse of it there. As far as additional comments, the traffic study. So there were three or four comments that came back from the traffic study. We're planning to respond to those comments tomorrow. Just one of the bigger questions there was, so the way that the traffic study's been set up is it's two-phased. So our portion of the development is the first phase of it. And then we came up with a conceptual density for what we call the second phase, which is the area, the 33 acres that's to the west of us. And we came up with some traffic densities. There's still a couple of questions about some of what's happening with that. But really, that's part of a future phase. We just wanted to identify both phases so that when someone was looking at the traffic generation, they could have an idea of what the entire project would generate. My anticipation is whoever that future developer would be, they would come in and update the traffic study, and based upon their plan, they would have a, you know, a new traffic study that they would have to get approved. I think that's pretty much everything. I'm certainly here to answer any other questions you may have for us here this evening.
Earlier, your plans called for an expensive renovation of the Coles Building. And now that they've announced their closing, what are your plans for that Coles Building?
So the plan at this point is that the Coles Building will be demolished. Once, they're supposed to be out in April. We're anticipating that we'll have maybe a late April or an early May closing. And our anticipation is at that time, they'll be out, and we'll be able to demolish it.
Thank you.
I have a question, a couple of questions. Thanks for taking the risk. Thanks for the presentation. And congratulations to our friends and partners in Forest Park for their leadership on this. It's been a long time coming, over 15 years and so forth. My question is this, you know, when this broke in the news and so forth, and a lot of positive, obviously, because it's, I'm not going to repeat, but the property is horrible right now. 15 years in the making, it's essentially falling apart. And granted, a very small component of this, 22%, I think Erin said, sits in Fairfield. But the residents that called me and asked about this, they were really excited about this. They thought, fantastic, we're getting rid of an eyesore and so forth, but we're putting in a million square feet of warehouse space, however you look at it. I guess my question to you is this, with your experience in this particular area and the mixed-use space in front of it, what is the likelihood of bringing in residential, restaurants, entertainment, and so forth that is directly in front of essentially warehouse or business space? Is there an opportunity, and what does that look like? And what's your experience with it?
So I do believe that there's an opportunity for that to occur. We do not do residential or retail outside of maybe some of our bigger markets that we do business in. But we do think that there is an opportunity there. It's certainly been one of the requests of the adjacent municipality. And so this plan has really been developed to focus around some of that.
Yeah, and we did a development in northern Kentucky that was a bigger cross-dock, and there was an apartment component to it. And so there, you have to be mindful of, I think what we struggle with is we don't know what the next use is.
Right.
Right? But the next developer needs to be mindful of buffers and setbacks and traffic flow, right? And they can figure that out, you know, to say that it's going to be a, you know, a grocery anchor or apartments. I don't know. I'm not qualified to say this could happen. But there is a way to do it. And this use is a lighter use than a pure distribution center where it's trucks just rolling in and out, right?
Sure.
It's going to be a mixed bag of, you know, hopefully some manufacturing, some light assemblies, so much lighter uses. And I think with the two access points on Cold and Forest Fair Drive, I think there's a natural way to do that when you think about curb cuts and how someone enters a property. But yeah, that's a great question. But I think, and it comes back to location, right? And there's a lot around there, and there's retail there, and it's right off the interstate. So I think once the hurdles are done, somebody's going to figure it out.
I hope so, because our Fairfield forward plan denotes this particular area as the gateway. It is a gateway into our city, a main one, off of the only highway that we really have there that's going by there. So that would be my hope, is that we could get creative and partner with somebody that can take a look at this and not get deterred with the industry, the industrial application behind it, but look at it as a real positive because of the location, Greg.
Yeah, I just want to add two things. Number one, the, I think that this, the uses that will go into these buildings are much more of a business park than a distribution-type park development. Because if you're looking at pure distribution, which is a lot of trucks, or just warehousing, which is just storage of boxes and things, they're usually looking for the cheapest rent possible.
Sure.
And this will not be the cheapest rent available on the market because they have a lot of costs that they have to go into preparing the site and buying the site and doing all the demolition and everything else. So people that choose this site, I think, are going to want to be here, probably for the access, the visibility, other types of things. So I think the uses that will go in here, I'm expecting them to be more jobs and less storage. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, we, there's a great opportunity here for that front 33 acres. We know, we've already had some conversations with our friends in Forest Park about what does that look like? Obviously, we've got to engage the current property owner because he's going to maintain ownership of that. But we think there's great opportunities to work together as communities and get public input and figure out what that looks like. And once these guys get rid of the encumbrances, I think it opens up those possibilities, which are not real possibilities with all the encumbrances on it right now.
Just one other question. I don't know if Forest Park, if Forest Park looked at this, but this is the engineer in me. Can you take the two corner pieces and add those to building one to also to the two center entrances? To have a, I'm going to say, a more consistent look, larger look? Yeah, this, where you have the two in the center. Has that even been discussed? It just has a nicer look to it, perhaps. And not to get into design here tonight, but...
At some point, it comes down to economics of the buildings.
Sure, I get that.
These are fairly expensive features on the end of the building. It would be hard to replicate that in more than the locations that we have. Just the glass that we've added, it's been a pretty significant increase from where we started.
Yeah, throw it out there.
Yeah. And then, those are knockouts.
We can add, yeah, so there are knockouts. If we do get a tenant that we need to add some additional glass, that is possible, but we wouldn't want to start with that. If we get a single-tenant user, a lot of times, they don't even like the glass there. And so it's, you know, it just depends on who's there at the end of the day.
But if somebody went into an intermediate entry with a needed, you know, 8,000 feet of office, we'd go down the wall.
You're going to customize it.
Yeah, just so there's natural light coming into the office area.
Thank you.
Actually, I have two questions. Appetite of Hillwood to take up this plan and in future expansion, expand out towards the restaurants and the existing structures that are there, to use up that extra space?
Yeah, you saw our, I don't know how many iterations of a site plan we've had on this, right? You know, we really don't have any intent to do that. You know, we think, we hope it's a win-win, right? We hope that there's some great mixed-use development out there and the businesses that are in our business park, there's synergies there, and they're patronizing the restaurants, or whatever it is, right? So there's no consideration for it today. We, you know, we thought about like the top part that was in Fairfield with the Coles news. But we're not doing anything with it. You know, we'll have three buildings to kind of work our way through and figure it out, so.
What's the site that's going to be undeveloped going to look like when it's finished? So obviously, there's going to be a lot of demolition going through there, lots of heavy construction going through there, concrete removal. What's that parking lot going to look like where outdoor world used to be, where Coles is used to be? Is that going to be repaving? Is that going to be gravel? Will it be fenced off? What are we going to be looking like afterwards?
Right there.
The intent is, so this road that kind of runs through the middle right here, that's going to be our D-mark zone. We're going to fence that area off. Everything that's to the west in this parking lot here will remain at the end of the day. And so we do not anticipate using that parking lot for any of our demolition and/or construction crews. We will demolish the Bass Pro Shop, all the mall structures here, the Coles. Everything up to the back of that curb line will come down. And then that area, when we're completed, will be top-soiled and seeded. And so we'll leave any, you know, wherever there was building or slab there, that will just be a grassy area at the end of the day until the next developer comes in. But that main parking area you see out here, that's going to stay as it is essentially.
Thank you. Any comments from our friends in the corner over there with Development Services?
Hi, Scott Lipsky, fourth ward representative for the planning commission. Ordinarily, I'd save the deep dive for Wednesday, but I was asked, since all the engineers and traffic study experts are here this evening, to maybe throw some of the questions out so there can at least be a little bit of discussion. Maybe not answers this evening, but so that you know kind of what some of the thought process is, and you can get together and maybe address those. If not for Wednesday's meeting, then for additional council meetings. But in going through the staff notes and the traffic impact study, a couple of questions came up. And the first is that the project estimates by the staff notes estimate somewhere between 360 and 450 employees once this project is completed. But the traffic impact study shows under 200 trips in AM peak or PM peak. So somewhere between 400 employees and only 200 trips. That's awfully optimistic from a car-pulling standpoint. I don't know that the numbers quite work out. So there may be a need to go back and relook at that. And it may come to another question that I had here. Is there a more appropriate land-use calculation for the traffic impact study than number 150 warehousing? I wonder if maybe that's where the miss might be. The traffic impact study also shows a level of service expectation to decrease to Level E in 2026, next year, at Cold Drive and at the I-275 East ramp. Now, there have been a number of suggestions on the I-275 access, but it sounds like that's being considered. My greater consideration is the level of service decrease to almost failure. That's F, we're one away in E, and just next year at Cold Drive. So I'd like someone to look at that, maybe answer some questions as to how that could be mitigated. The last item I had on here is maybe for council and staff's consideration. It was noted that additional improvements and expenses may be pushed to the Phase Two development. At this point, given some of the considerations in the previous work that the city of Fairfield has done with regard to that specific road and the intersection, I think it would be worthwhile for Fairfield and Forest Park to come together and discuss a joint-funded district for needed improvements and ongoing maintenance in this area since both cities are looking to benefit from this development.
You're talking about the intersections there, Scott?
I'm talking about the intersection and specifically South Gilmore there at Omniplex and Cold where the increased traffic is going to be developed. Similar to, I guess, some of the other issues we've had with maintenance and upkeep in that area, it might be a good idea for both cities to put together a joint plan to head that off, head those issues off down the road and make sure that there's both... that off, head those issues off down the road and make sure that there's both a body in place and funding available for maintenance, upkeep and the necessary development down the road. And those were all the notes that I had. Sorry to take additional time, but appreciate your attention and we'll be grateful for any additional information you can share with us Wednesday evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsky. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Any comments from the audience whatsoever?
Good evening, members of council, mayor, administration. My name is Lawrence Hawkins III. I'm the mayor of the city of Springdale, your neighbor to the east and sometimes to the south. And obviously, this development has come to our attention. I as well am well aware of dealing with a failing mall and redeveloping it. A few things, I just want to make sure you guys are taking into consideration. The project, as you look to the east, has our residential development right there. And I actually used to live on Bridgeport Lane, which is the row of houses, which is directly there to the east of the development. Through the course of my time, when I was living there, I would deal with cars racing back and forth in the back parking lot and would oftentimes call Forest Park and complain about that. It's important that as you go through and look at this development, and obviously, these are not easy things to do and there are a lot of moving parts with regard to this property in particular with two counties, multiple municipalities, multiple school districts. But we're just asking that you continue to think about your neighbor to the east in this situation and sometimes to the south with regard to the eleven thousand residents in Springdale. I personally have been impacted by this development as it sits right now as Forest Fair Mall. When it was developed, I was a child. My friends that lived back in Beacon Hills that abutted that property dealt with the loss of woods that were there, the displacement of animals, coyotes coming into the neighborhood and all those issues. This development with regard to how big those buildings are is going to be monstrous, particularly right up against our residents. And we've made a development Commerce Park, which is off seven forty-seven. We have residents in Harridge Hill and we've been very mindful of them. We went through that. We had a significant setback. We had mounding that was probably fifteen to twenty feet tall as well as vegetation and trees on top of that mounding. And so what I'm asking is, I've heard the term win-win, and what I hear is, with regard to you guys, win, Forest Park, win. But what I hear for Springdale is a loss when I think about our residents here. And I want you guys to be significant, successful. I want Forest Park to be successful. I have a great relationship with Mayor Brown and Forest Park. I want you guys to develop the mall. I think it's a great thing for everyone in the region. I'm just asking if you guys keep in mind your neighbor and considering moving this development just maybe a little bit to the west. You have the space, you see the footprint of where the current mall is there, and if you move it, we end up with a bigger buffer. You can put mounding there, you can put vegetation on top. This is something that historically did not take place. If we don't learn from history, we're bound to repeat it. It doesn't impact the residents of Fairfield. It does impact us. Had when the mall been put in, they didn't take down all those woods, which they didn't need all the parking for, we've seen that even in its heyday of going to Forest Fair Mall, they didn't need all that parking. We would have a much better buffer then. I'm asking that you guys give us the same consideration you would do if that back fence line was full of Fairfield residents. I appreciate your consideration. I wish you guys success with regard to this project. I'm just asking if you could move it west a little ways. Thank you.
Mayor, that's a good call out. We appreciate you being here. Thank you very much.
Mayor, did you have the same conversation with Forest Park?
So when our economic development director brought this to my attention last week, we had a council meeting last Wednesday I brought to our council's attention. I indicated them that I'd be contacting both Fairfield and Forest Park and sending out letters. Council will probably look to either send out a letter or a resolution with regard to making sure that both municipalities know where we stand on it. Again, I said in our meeting, we don't control Fairfield, we don't control Forest Park. Everybody is their own entity. We're just asking for some consideration with regard to our residents. I personally have experienced this, so we will be addressing Forest Park as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I just did want to respond to that. We are aware of those, of that neighborhood there. We have kind of let Forest Park, since it's that, you know, that portion of the side is really more, it's neighbors up to Forest Park. So they have sort of taken the lead. I know that they have had some discussions with the developer. Right now, it's just that it's a small wall and a wooden fence that's not in great shape. And I think that some of the conditions of approval that Forest Park is looking at would increase that, the walls and the screening and that sort of thing. But I'll, I need to get more information on that, which we will follow up on. But I know Forest Park had requested some more information on that. So we'll certainly get in touch with them and we'll let our friends in Springdale know where we're at.
Any other comments from the audience or from council? Hearing none, we will not close the joint public hearing. Thank you very much. We will move to the approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes from January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Are there any additions, deletions or corrections to the meeting minutes? Seeing none, we will let them stand, approve as written. Old Business. Community and Public Relations, Councilmember Gwen Brill.
Thank you, Mayor Craft. I have before us a simple motion for a formal recognition or approval of the council assignments and appointments dated January first of two thousand twenty-five. I'd like to make a motion to remove that from table.
We have a motion to remove that from the table? And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
And now I'd like to make a motion to amend.
We have a motion to amend and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
And a motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Development Services, we have an ordinance, amending ordinance number one six dash eight four, the codified ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio, section one one three zero dot zero one B two, the city of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map. Legislation to hold a second reading pending Planning Commission recommendation. This is the second reading of this ordinance and it will be held pending, excuse me, pending Planning Commission recommendation. We'll move to Public Utilities, Councilmember Matt Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Rice Mayor. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a real estate exchange agreement with the city of Hamilton, Ohio. Let this stand as a second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Public Works, Councilmember Debbie Pennington.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one resolution declaring the necessity of repairing sidewalks and including a, and this is the third reading, so I want to make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, ma'am. Moving to New Business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all new business by title only, please.
We have a motion and a second to read all new business by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving to Finance and Budget, City Manager Timmer.
We have three ordinances tonight for finance and budget. The first ordinance is to amend chapter one sixty-three of the codified ordinances. This ordinance is requested in order to ensure the city is in compliance with the Ohio public employees retirement system. The second and third ordinances are for appropriations. The contractual appropriations total three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and include three projects in public utilities and public works departments. The non-contractual appropriations total eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and include one project in the public works department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timmer. Councilmember Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is an ordinance to amend subsection B fringe benefit method of section one sixty-three point one eight, OPR's pickup of chapter one sixty-three, employee provisions of ordinance number one sixty-six dash eighty-four, a codified ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
We have a motion and a second to suspend second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. The second item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one fifty-eight dash twenty-four entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Contractual appropriations of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven total. This time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
We have a motion and a second to suspend second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks. The last item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one fifty-eight dash twenty-two entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations and for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. These are non-contractual appropriations for eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars total. I'd like to make motions to suspend second, third readings.
We have a motion and a second to suspend second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please read the meeting schedule.
Monday, February twenty-fourth, council manager briefing, five thirty P M, regular meeting, seven P M. Monday, March tenth, council manager briefing, six P M, regular meeting, seven P M. Monday, March twenty-fourth, council manager briefing, six P M, regular meeting, seven P M.
Thank you, Madam Council. Council will now recess into executive session. Y'all have a good evening. Thank you.